That's all right. Thanks for coming. So we're going to start off. Gordon has come to present or ask some questions. Did you want to?
What's my schedule? If I were to consider advertising for nine with watch and can we use one watch in their next, um, let us make them.
Okay.
I'll talk to them with a million. So be there.
Yeah, I assume that's something we can do. Yes.
We'll look at it.
So if you email that through, yeah, if you email that through, then they'll get back to you with what can be done.
Yeah, we were very short on bread and got more tears and evidence of the land not being very prosperous. So not everyone is on Facebook or social media. There's another social media site. It's certainly a win. We are, we are, we are desperate to advance it, you know.
Sure. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think it's, um, I think it'd be completely appropriate to advertise it on our Facebook. Page via social media. Um, difficult in the our town book because once you do one, you've got to do everyone. And it would disappear. You know, there'd be so, you know, once you've done one, everyone will want one bit, just disappear among all the other stuff. I think in terms of, and this is for sweat to you, but I think it had more cut on social media.
Yeah. The town council page would have more reach. Okay. Have a look at what can be done. Great. Did you want to stay for the meeting? Yeah. Right. Was that, was that everything? Was that everything? Great. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Welcome, everybody. This is the Community and Environmental Services Committee of the November at six o'clock. So let's get started. First of all, we have 373 apologies for absence.
Apologies for beauty from councillors, Britta, Ringwood, Edmonds. Right. And Julie.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. 374 minutes of the Community and Environmental Services Committee for, this will be two months ago. Did anybody have any comments on the previous minutes? Excellent. 375 declarations of any disposable pecuniary interest. Okay. So 376, we're going to do your town team managers' report. And were you going to separate out, you're going to do, so you're just giving us the highlights?
I was going through a few points from it. If you've got any questions, you want to stop me. If I miss anything, still.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Firstly, in the town team report, we've got a new highways officer at Norfolk County Council. And we're moving a bit of a better relationship than we've had recently. So we've got some up and coming work, then like reduction in the hedges of the bus interchange, the underpass cleaning that we've been doing, we're hoping to get them more involved with. And going forward, we're going to have regular visits within, so see how we can move forward. We've had meetings with Breckland Council recently with a view to the licensing for the pocket parks. And sort of the benches on the Abbey Water Meadows. They're all in progress at the moment. Recent issues we could have in the town, so behaviour wise, the main square area. We've been quite suspicious down there recently, but we're keeping on top of it. We've got some meetings coming up in the near future between ourselves, Breckland and Norfolk Police to see what we can do to combat it in the future. Another area we've had some antisocial behaviour issues is around the back of the St Cuthbert's church, et cetera, with the street drinkers. And we're in conversation at the moment with the ministry, we need to put in up CCTV cameras. Or maybe even just dummy CCTV cameras for the time being, as it is here. But that's got to go through to the, um, meet with their committee and they've got to take it up with their higher authority. Some of the tasks we've been carrying out through September and October, we've been sorting out the grazing and fence repairs, internal play parks repairs, vegetation on the creeping marsh works on site by Nunn's Bridges. We've instilled some chatty benches on Ford Meadow. We've been trimming vegetation at Castle Park on Ford Meadow. We've removed the summer planting around town and the Christmas planting or the winter planting. Our regular building checks for compliance and legionella's, we've moved out. And we're now set up in the guild hall. There's still a little to come out of there, but we're a large way through it. The litter bin and dog replacements are well underway. One time in the day that's now on the list. We've been trimming the hedges at skate park. The bus station doors have been repaired. Castle Park fence repair works, um, move the water bowser's new livestock. The street cleaning of TCC assets, public toilet operations and fencing. Tin training this month or these two months has included health and safety, manual handling, first aid, cost and risk assessments. The community litter pick we held over the two days recently on St John's Way and Beach Close Woods. The community bowl planting events which are going forward at the moment on Ford Meadow and Mill Lane and eventually Kim's Belt. But we're just waiting for confirmation on the licence for Kim's Belt. We've got the go ahead for the community orchard on Dane Close and the trees are due for delivery in January. New grazing licences have been drawn up to skewer new grazers for Ford Meadow and we've got sheep on both paddocks there now. And eventually he'll be looking at moving on to Barn Common. Castle Mound, we've found a move with sheep from the small paddock across to the large side to directly on for itself. Norfolk Wildlife Trust recently visited and conducted a survey and they're seeing very positive benefits from the grazing on the site. Got some future works coming up. Obviously the Christmas lights switch on, springbowl planting. And we're going to revamp the sleepers around the flower bed out front of the Carnegie here. Along with venue building and preventive maintenance works. There are some items to notice. The committee, and this is concerning for us on Barn Common. There's a vast amount of gorse out there at the moment. And we as a team and volunteers are going to clear some of the smaller areas best we can by hand. But there will be a need to bring the mechanical cut in to get the site back to the management plan as, as we've seen here. And that brings us on to the Beryl, Beryl warden administrator's report. Any questions on that?
I've got a couple, just, just as questions about, if I may, as usual, that's really, really busy. The underpass cleaning, are you still keeping an eye on Glee Close? I mean, the reason I ask is there's some new graffiti in there.
We've not been there recently, I must admit, but it is on the schedule. We are trying to get around to them. Until they sort of take over the job of themselves, we will carry on with it.
Okay. Thank you. So that's that one. The other one was Dane Close. Now, I know we got the ground. How many trees does 500 quid buy?
I don't know.
Because Dane Close is really small. That's the other bit I was thinking. I wondered what this orchard, and it sounds massive, is going to look like? Is it going to be three trees?
I'm going to guess 10 or 20, but that is purely a guess. I really wouldn't know. So don't quote me on that.
Right.
It was, it was a minimum of five.
Correct. It was a minimum of five, was it? Right, okay.
So I bought trees from that own garden, a decent tree which stands, the opposite of the height for plant trees, about five to six foot. And they're about, it's really 50, 100 quid. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I spent. It's just I know that sometimes when it's done through councils, it ends up more expensive than, than necessary, but that's good. Um, sorry, one more thing on there was about the, um, the stuff for King Square.
Yeah.
That was reported through STAG this week. And we're going to include Nick on the, on the STAG catch up for that. But also the Police and Crime Commissioner has been, uh, sent a letter about it and about their drinking at St Cuthbert's.
Yeah.
Because she had the idea for blocking that piece off. So fingers crossed on that. Thanks. Excellent.
Terry, did you want to go next?
Yeah, a couple of things. Have we got bins going in along the river? I've requested that before. Alongside the benches.
The new benches were proposed and to put in.
No, the benches that are there now.
The benches that are there now. Not that I'm aware of.
I have asked for them.
Okay.
If you're not aware, could you ask again?
I will chase it up. I mean, they may well be and I'm just not aware of it. I'll chase it up with Nick.
I think there's, so it's the, it's the, the city of river between, um, Hayling Bridge and the North Road Bridge. I think there are three benches along there. And I asked for bins to go alongside them because you've got the benches there, which attract, or no bins near us.
Yes, excellent. Absolutely.
I have a, it's like, I think those benches we put in on behalf of Breckland Council. So we may have to dispute the permissions and get, because we certainly don't own that land that I'm, I'm fairly certain of. So we'd have to get permission. They paid as part of one of the projects when I first joined, which you don't, they paid for those benches to be installed.
A certain nature of bins there.
Yeah. But brilliant.
Thank you.
Excellent.
The other thing really was just wanted to mention the seminar we went to.
Oh, yes.
For Angler and Bloom, which was really good, very educational, I think. And we had some real strong pointers about how we get gold next time.
Yeah, very useful information.
And the principle among that was we set out a route before we invite the judges along and we clean that route before.
Basically.
Yeah. I think we do that and one or two other things, obviously, my work, et cetera. I think we get gone.
Yeah. I think we, we do have a chance from what we've picked up there, definitely.
Yeah.
And that's what we're going for.
I didn't think you'd get to set the route yourselves. I assumed they would be like, that's interesting.
We decide what they, what they see and what we show them.
On, on the day we just went out hot, we just, we just flagged it and made it. It was probably to our detriment.
Okay.
I think we've been in hindsight, we could have planned it a little better and we will next time, definitely. I mean, for example, our litter picking guy was walking towards us as we walked past litter. Now, if we hadn't walked in the other direction, it would have been simple.
They commented on it and they probably went past somewhere.
And literally the guy who would have picked it up for us was walking towards us as we came across it. So it's bad planning, all right.
Was that on the same point, Matt?
It's, it's on exactly the same point. So one of the things that we did speak about was litter picking, not only on the route they choose, but generally on the routes into town. So they've all got to drive into the town to get there. So I did a little bit up by the, um, Munford Road roundabout, which was horrendous. But of course, that's only one entry into the town. If they pick one of the others, and I know we can't clean the whole town, but there are some key obvious areas. The entrances to our town look absolutely awful with the amount of fly tipping. And two hours with a wagon would have solved some of that. So I, I think as well as picking that route, it's well worth just trying to do the entrances because they're going to come in somehow. And it all helped, I think.
Yeah, we're far away off the bypass. Which four are realistic entrances?
Yeah. Of course, the cleanest one is the only one we own and that's the one to Beryl Road.
Can we set the route from you have to drive in?
Yeah. We're only coming to town this way on a Tuesday.
Okay, Stuart, did you want to?
A couple of things. Pocket parks, I know this is subject to funding proof. Will they be inclusive as part of the place that the town council made regarding when everyone has the right to play?
These are more not a play area as such as, like a quiet garden, bench seating area for people to sit in. I don't think that's always been in parameters.
Right. So they've still got the word park in it. Why are they still?
They're just flower, they're just area, community flowering areas. So we would correct them.
So I'll give you an example, Stuart. He had a little trail of grass on Forstham Road.
That's a pocket park.
That's a pocket park. He won't be playing with that.
The other thing, one of the other things is, um, you said about the antisocial behaviour in the town. Now, what evidence is it that there, I don't like the word youth to start it, should be young people, if it is young people. Um, is there evidence, substantial evidence that there are young people causing the damage? Or are we just assuming that young people cause the damage?
Can I comment? What's happened is Norfolk County Council have improved all the lighting around King Square. Uh, on the other night, uh, the operator, the camera operator, Kings Lynn picked it up. And as the police arrived, the young people scattered and they were about 30 or 40 of them. And so they've got CCTV evidence of the kids actually doing, oh, sorry, the young people actually doing it.
Can we, you know, using the word young people?
I will try to do it, but can we change?
Yeah. Um, the other thing is, I know you're going to engage with Norfolk Police and Breckland Council. Can we not engage with youth groups that are dealing, you know, sort of clearly that a lot of these young people are probably bored? Or is, you know, not much to do?
One guy contacted us at the moment regarding setting up some youth projects involving skating and scootering around town. And his, his line is about helping to prevent.
I think what we've done is we've actually put together, Nick has put together a, um, a, a, a kind of joint action group, including Target, including Breckland Enforcement, there's a whole lot of stakeholders. We also want to approach the Youth Advisory Board and actually just talk to them so we can actually start addressing it. You know, rather than just trying to put CCTV cameras. So there is a, there is a, a meeting that we're having at offices. And then we'll bring it back to the councillors if there's some interventions that would actually require, uh, councillors kind of supporting people.
You said there's a new vote on the trial that does that bridge. Road or?
Yeah.
But it's a guy. It's, I think it has been reported to Norfolk County Council now, the sign between Churchill Way and the Munford Road. There's an excellent way to happen.
I'm not familiar.
It is, you can.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. And regardless of who it belongs to, it's, it's just an excellent way to have the days, you know, for the other ones.
The thing about, the thing about that road in particular, and it's no different from many of the others, is we report that every year. We go through loads of hassle trying to get it done. You know, eight weeks later it gets done and they go, how brilliant. And then next year we have exactly the same issues. It's completely grown out of the road. And so it's really about, you know, reclaiming our pavements, trying to get people on them. Because pushing people in the road, it's just horrendous. And it's the constant, there's no routine maintenance. It's always with our direction and, you know, questions and can you please do it? And we always go around the houses of people saying, it's not me, it's them, it's them, it's not me. And it always, we always know who it is because we've tried before. So, so frustrating that we have to keep going back to this, which has been solved previously.
They're saying the only routine maintenance they lose is safety.
And this is definitely safety.
I agree.
It is.
I agree.
You know, a path is two points.
People just more like an excuse to not do anything than what they're actual.
Right.
I'm happy going back on Saturday.
No, no, you know, get it. It's just, sorry, keep it. I'll shut up.
Were you going to say something on the vandalism?
Yeah. So the vandalism, I think it's really worth STAG making sure that we link in with the town council. That's because we're getting some good, um, groups coming to STAG who may not have linked in with town council. Hopefully Nick will. My attendance. But before your next meeting, because we were completely ready to all the, um, CCTV stuff and how that was reported and that kind of stuff. So it's really worth it. And they have got all the pictures of all those individuals who were involved in it. So, you know, and they range from late teens to the 14s.
It's a long process from there though, isn't it? Once you've got the pictures.
There was one other bit. In May, there was a reported fly tipping. I know this is, no one actually knows who owns it. Bright Kingfisher Lake. It's horrendous. It's not been cleared. The Forestry Commission says it's not them. Norfolk Highway says it's not them. Breckland says it's not them. And it's clearly not that good. And the litter and the fly tipping is still going on.
Slightly crammed.
Sorry?
Slightly crammed.
And it's, you know, it's the ladies that do the river, the, or the water testing down there, she's constantly sort of messing it. Not been done yet. Not been done yet.
So do we, we don't know who owns?
I don't, I'm not. I think it could even be Arnie Water, to be fair. Because that's where the sewage thing is.
I think it is.
Could well be that. But there's people that make, you know, that if you walk down there and then you walk towards where the pumping station is, people have just purchased that stuff. It's like pretty dizzy, hating a washing machine.
Trouble once it starts, it comes.
So people then would think it's just coming.
Yeah.
Can Beefeater sort, sort out who that belongs to?
The, who, sorry?
BFER. Beefeater. Yeah, Beefeater. Sorry. Because, you know, they've done all the riparian rights and all that, knew owns what bit and surely they must have identified that. Because many, I'm going to say six to eight months ago, we were told we were going to get a map of that. So we knew who, what bit belonged to who. And this, you know, it must be longer than that because it was the last time we had flooding down on.
So who owns Kingfisher Lake then?
I don't know. It might privately own. I'm not sure.
Okay.
So imagine. I think it goes to the same as the river, which is the.
National Rivers Hall.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that something the town team can look into? Is that an appropriate action?
BFER still winged it. I don't think we've gone there.
They're still there till the end of Feb.
Yeah.
Let's speak to them and see if we can get some help from them.
Okay.
That is an excellent.
Right. Let's move on.
Okay, um, very good. Administrator's report, excuse me. The data's all there if you want to check it. The main point they take, Matt, is the notice boards for the cemetery been ordered. And we're waiting on completion date for that. So we can have the new information boards down there. The market coordinators' report, Julia's doing a great job, um, taking the role on really well. She's now reaching out and promoting markets to other storeholders and businesses. And we've got a new market traders pack being distributed. There's a list of potential traders there, et cetera, that open to come on in the new year possibly. On the allotments, we have had, um, excuse me, 17 applications recently, which brings the list up to 27 on the waiting on the applicants list. We've got 25 vacant plots. I believe they need, um, preparing for the new tenants though. The water supply's been turned off at the allotments now until the 31st of March. Livestock wise, there's new controls on, um, Old Street. Notes have been put up on the relevant boards. Our volunteer groups are doing an amazing job as usual. Um, the conservation guys have been out in St Frederic's Wood. They've had a guided walk of the open spaces. They've done some pond work at Memorial Garden. Have another guided walk with the Norfolk Wildlife Trust. They've helped to clear the invasive species, ragwort and golden rod. And been clearing back the pathways and conservation sites. The Bloom Volunteers have been helping us with the litter picking and the new winter planting and clearing of the summer planting. And as Terry mentioned earlier, we went to the Angler and Bloom Seminar with a couple of them a while back, representing our group there. And moving on to the BFER, we're looking at two interpretation. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Terry?
Just to echo what Graham was saying about Julia, who is our market coordinator. I've had comments from both market traders. And actually members in the public who come up to me have said, she's brilliant. She works hard. She's invested in the job. Social media stuff she does is good. Um, market traders love her. I think she's a real asset for the, for the town.
Yeah, talking about market. So will benefit from vegetable, will that implement on the listed guy? Will that tread on his toes and what?
That one, because that's on Tuesdays.
Okay. And also there's, I see there's a number of food vendors.
We have, we have a, um, we have a policy that we only have one of any kind of, right, fellow, right, on top.
Now, there's, there's going to be some food vendors and they do need to be registered with Breckland Council.
So they have to have a food rating.
And before they can try. Food ratings and the reality of it, et cetera, et cetera, just to sell food. I think there was one a couple of weeks ago where Breckland.
Keith's.
See, then Keith, he, he's an official Breckland, he picked up on that.
Yeah.
She spat some on the place working, he'd gone in like a, a rush where she just put almost like a trellis with some food on it. And he was, he was on it.
What was that?
We've sat out, a prep she's, I think when she got, I mean, there once, she sent sausage rolls and cakes. And she just put it almost like just on a trellis. And there was a lot of comments and he saw it and said, no, that's the way.
Can you? And I was going to say the winter planting looks really nice. It's a very good job. And, and I saw that the summer plants had been put for people to take, which is good. Were they taken? Yeah, excellent. Very good. Yeah, that's really nice. Okay. Are there any other comments on any of the reports? Okay. Are you happy to note the report?
Well, just a quick one. You said there's 25 vacant plots.
Yeah.
How many have we got on the waiting list?
27, I believe.
These are the ones that need, sorry, these are, for example, we actually need to get a, the, the ground is rock hard to be able to.
Okay, so.
These are the ones that were rated previous meeting where we had to get, where, and it's, it's thousands of pounds to get a plot turned over. So we, we are watching the piddies of that.
Carl's been working hard, that's it. But some, yeah, some tissues.
But they need support contractors to come in.
Yeah, when you look at, to remember, you're looking at something that's a six, seven thousand.
Are councillors happy to note the report? Okay. Um, are you joining us for any of the other items, Graham?
I'm new to you, Nick. I can be, excuse me.
There's nothing, you don't need to be here for the BFER. Okay, yeah, you're welcome to go there now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to item 377, the BFER interpretation board.
Um, in terms of the BFER, what they've been doing in their wider project is that the Muslim Hall and Brandon have been putting up these information boards. They've identified two areas where they'd like to put information boards, one by the old swimming pool. And the other one by, I think it's by the old mill, somewhere around there. On the, on the jetty here, the coffee mill. And what they're doing is BFER actually closes down at the end of February. So they're going to pay for all the installation costs. But what they've asked us to do is to sign a licence agreement with Breckland for the next five years to maintain the boards. We estimate the basic quality of the boards that have been proposed, that the maintenance work should be minimal. So we, we could afford a budget for 150 pounds. So the reason for bringing the item to the committee is to say, are we happy to, to do that, to exceed to, to, um, BFER's request? That they donate the boards and we sign the licence agreement? And is the committee happy that we set aside 150 pounds in our annual budget to maintain the boards? Hopefully we won't need any, any of the money. And the last thing that we've been asking the committee is, will you empower the, you know, the dedicated authority to the officers to sign any licence agreements with, with Breckland Council? I have since, since, um, setting up the agenda this afternoon and we've got some pictures of what they're proposing. There's the Thetford Swimming Pool one. I haven't seen it. That's what the board will have a whole lot of information on that. And the second, the first one is actually the Thetford Riverside. So they've actually done all the designs, et cetera, and they're very in keeping with what they've done in other areas of the, of the circle area.
Okay. And so just to clarify, that there are two boards, so this is for 300 pounds per year?
Correct.
Terry?
Um, yeah, 150 pounds times two, 300 a year, times five is 1500. Am I, am I, that's just right? Not a lot of money, but I think we went out of our way to help BFER, the offered them space here free of use. Is that right?
In lieu of, I presume our non-cash contribution was, was the, the useless.
I think we should ask them for the money.
Ask for, for basically.
Yeah, we've done, we've, we've looked after them. We've done very well. They're now leaving us with a, a bill. I think they should pay that. We should ask for 1500 quid from. We should ask for fifteen hundred quid from going forward.
Stuart?
Am I right in thinking that these boards will be just like information boards, like strong perspex? Um, in that case, if we are to do it, can we source this locally? Because I know, um, Peers Plastics in Thetford will produce notice boards and actual perspex and bones on the concrete roof. Because what concerns me is their plastic, something along a bank, bank, and they're doing it at Norwich Road and making, um. You know, if you get a strong pay extra from the president, so probably remember that. More reasons for us to be.
Mac?
Um, my only thing is, and it's a little bit following up from what Terry's saying, is, is actually, I, I think they're a brilliant thing to have in the town. I think we, you know, they would really add to our, you know, understanding of visitors and all the rest of it. My concern is, if we don't spend the hundred and fifty quid, then we not just save it up for next year? If you see what I mean, so if we, we are paying the maintenance and we put money aside every year for five years, and then we don't, we don't spend it in the first year because nothing happens to them, we're three hundred cut up. Is that right? So what we're saying is, we're not giving them the money and somebody else is going to hold it and, and do stuff with it. It's going to be our money that we, we've just allocated a bit to keep ma- maintain something that's in the town.
As a side of the whole reason to ask you for fifteen hundred quid, I think. They've got the money.
We want a bandit proof, isn't it?
I'm, I'm less concerned about that. That's, that's not the thing I'm concerned about, the money.
So I'm all right.
It's a bit of a principle thing, I think.
Yeah, I get it. I'm all for it. What I would hate to do is that we, we stick in the mud and then don't get the signs. So I've got to try to, you know, if.
Oh, we'll get the signs, yeah.
So officers to go back, uh, and just portray the, the views of the committee. Contribution and ask for contribution.
And we will, I think we want to go back and say, we like the boards. The other question was, are we happy for the town council logo to be on there?
Yeah, I think, I think if the town council logo is on there, then, then, you know, I could understand the money. But actually, it's not on the bottom of there, is it?
They did ask, there was, it says.
I just put it on one of the forwards, but not the other.
They've asked about the possibility of using the logo, would we agree to this?
So on the Riverside board, if you use, if you get a magnifying glass, you can connect, you just see, there it is there. It's not on the, it's on the swimming pool one, so they haven't put it.
In, in theory, they don't have to ask permission because it's not copyrighted.
Yeah.
No, but I think it's the.
The courtesy of.
Yeah, the courtesy to do that. Um, do we still feel comfortable asking for them to pay the upkeep money and including, and giving them permission to include the logo?
It's trade off. Money on the schemes, isn't it?
I mean, they might come back and say, we can't afford it.
Well, the, the only risk we have is that, like, so you might not incur the money, sorry, incur the expenditure, so therefore we, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, if you actually give your money and receive that value for it, but we could, we don't have those discussions, we never know what the answer would be.
And I think the other thing is, we could say, we estimate that this would be five years, but actually if the money, it could roll over longer than that, because the boards are going to be there for, hopefully for a very long time.
I think we just ask for the money. We don't, we don't put any conditions or qualifications. They've done very well at that.
Okay, but yeah, is there, that can be a lot of the conversation, um.
And then we'll come back to the January meeting. Give the results.
Just checking, we've, uh, answered all of the asks. Okay, excellent.
I'm gonna propose a, just, so I'm, I'm just a bit nervous about this because they do finish in February. And I, we're gonna meet in January, so if they turn and said, no, then we're not gonna do it, we haven't got any breathing space.
That is a good, that is a good point.
So how about, we, we asked the question, you said that, you know, actually, would you mind paying it? Because we feel, you know, we've looked after it. If they turn around and say, absolutely not, no way, because everybody else has paid for their bits, then I think really, we've got to, we've got to sort of bite the bullet and pay it. But I think it's worth asking the question in the first place, simply because of the timeline around, you know, it's, it's quite flash to bang this really, isn't it?
Yeah, you're right, I was wondering.
And I guess that by January, they'll probably be shuffling the last bit of paper and closing up and trying to get out the door. So.
Yeah.
They'll all be looking for new jobs as well, that's it.
It would be different if we were meeting in December, because we've got a few months.
Yeah.
Okay, are you happy with that? Okay, so we need a proposer and a seconder for that.
Yeah.
Stuart and Mac, or Stuart and Terry. Okay, so moving on to three seven eight, the financial reports, and passing back to Alice.
Those are how the reports do start writing themselves after a period of time, because nothing really changes, uh, uh, after the first quarter. But it, it's, um, I'll just run through some of the key highlights. Um, from an income perspective, the donations we received on the region of ten thousand pounds, everyone's been billed. Uh, um, the only donation that hasn't been billed is in our cemeteries, and I'll talk about that a bit later. Uh, our big key financial risk is bottom cross common and the cross amount. We are really hoping that the movement of the sheep onto the actual mound itself, they've done such a great job on the other part of, 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 of the cross monument, that it's, that it's tremendous. So if they can continue that and we don't have to do mechanical cutting, then we have saved ourselves tens of thousands of pounds. The issues on bottom cross common are a little bit more complex because of the course that Graham mentioned in the town team report. So there is always be sitting with a contingent liability there that we may have to actually do mechanical cutting. And it's not only the mechanical cutting, the most effective way to get rid of the course is you have to burn it. So there's environmental factors that kick into it. The quotes that we have at the moment just, uh, are, are two thousand five hundred pounds per day. And we're talking possibly, you know, ten days, so you could be talking up to about twenty-five thousand pounds, uh, uh, of, of cost there. Toilet expenditure, um, toilet expenditure significantly under budget. Um, we, it, it's related to the contract, we were using a third-party contractor, ten, well, that's that contract. We were hoping to terminate on the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-four. We were only terminated that quite recently in August. So we have incurred costs there, but we've also had significant saves in the salary budget. So that doesn't, if you look at it overall, uh, our salaries budget is way un, is under, not way under, it's, is under. So that has funded some of those particular costs. Our tree surveying costs are higher. Some, some of this is probably due to timing issues, because we've had, uh, the surveying costs, we negotiate on a year-by-year basis. They haven't increased their costs, but there has been, the, the billing period is not necessarily matched up one each year. So I think last year we had a little bit of a saving and this year we've got a heavier, we're paying a, a greater price. We've done a lot of work on tree maintenance, so we're hoping that those costs will be lower and we'll have a saving there to fund the, the, the slightly higher surveying costs. Um, we've got no list, uh, uh, salary budget. Uh, one of the reasons we do have a, or sorry, why our salaries are low in the budget is that we budgeted for two peterses. We haven't employed them. Uh, we are very reluctant to employ peterses at the moment because just the cost and the, the, the impact on the, the kind of thin management structure is vast. So this is something that we have identified, but we may have to just wait and get all the new staff laid down, all the equipment that we need and everything else. And then we can, we can take that, that further. And then the last thing is really just the playpark expenditure. We, this council in the last two or three years has invested huge amounts in playparks. We funded it mostly from reserves. And this year, I, we budgeted quite a significant amount. We haven't spent much of it, uh, and we've gone through the toughest time, which is the summer holiday period. Uh, so we're hoping that, that, that those savings will continue, uh, uh, for the rest of the financial year. Uh, because vandalism and, and use of the playparks is a lot lower than winter months and it is in the summer months. So, um, there are no concerns from a, from a kind of budget perspective. Our income is sixteen thousand higher than budgeted, our expenditure is fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-two thousand budget. So we, there is, you know, I'm not losing any steep at the moment. Basically, I won't lose any more steep before the end of the financial year.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions or comments in the first report? I, I think, so I don't know a huge amount about the apprentices' part, because I'm not sure when that process was started. Was that quite a while ago?
We've budgeted to take on two new peterses for the two thousand twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five financial year.
Okay.
And we haven't done that. I mean, it took us ages. We, we expect to have all the staff in place by the first of April. It's taken us up until May, June to get the technical staff and to get the, the, the amenities, the assistant, that, that didn't take longer, so.
So, so that process hasn't started at all yet?
No, no, no.
But the plan is?
The plan is to, for the committee to think, think about that from a budget perspective. Because when we talk about the budget and another committee haven't had much chance to study the budget information, one of the issues that we have is how much do we bring back in house versus how much do we outsource? Because that open space vegetation contract is massive. You know, our existing contractors gave it to us way below everyone else. We've had a little bit of a dividend from that, but then there's no ways that they're going to tender again at, at those low prices. So the question comes as to how do we afford it? Can, you know, we've had the budget doubling those costs, uh, based on what they charged us this year. Do we, is that, is this going to be cheaper for us to look at peterses or looking at certain activities being brought to the house? That exercise is, is underway at the moment.
Okay, so we need to look at the costs, the benefits?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mac?
I mean, the only thing I would say about apprentices is that they really aren't a silver bullet for a lot of things. They suck up an enormous amount of staff time. They, they have to, you have to do so much duty of care with them to make sure that they're given all the right opportunities, which might not necessarily be the thing you've wanted to employ them for. And, you know, in theory, you're trying to build them towards a job at the end of it. And so therefore apprentices are very difficult to not employ at the end of it, if, if they're not. So what I'm saying is, sometimes they are brilliant, but often they are real bind, particularly for a small council like this. Um, and I think the fact that we didn't get them this year is probably an advantage actually, because there's been so much staff churn that it, it would have been really disruptive. Uh, I love the apprentice scheme, I think it's great, but it, it does come with some real problems. And of course, for the apprentice period, they can't work on their own for a lot of stuff, so.
Sorry. Time and the budget for it, we should be keeping it. That's simple.
I, I, I think it's, we were saying, if it was just a timing issue, of when do we actually employ them? Because I think it comes down to, you know, if we just add the additional staff members who have the capacity to manage them, then the disadvantages of having a peterses kick in. It's just, that's why we've got a variance, a positive variance.
Any other comments on that? Okay, thank you. Onto the cemetery.
Uh, in terms of the cemetery, cemetery income has been very difficult to predict. There is a, an income mix between what is non parishioners and parishioners and exclusive rights of burial. I'm not so sure that I fully understand all of it, but, but, um, um, I have noticed in looking at the financial reports that our income in the last two years has really tightened out. You know, it's fallen quite significantly, and truly understanding that more and more will obviously help us, uh, going forward. Um, our income, we, we lowered the budget for this year, so our income is higher than, than budget, so that's a, that's a, that's a positive, uh, aspect. We've also got a grant from BFER in terms of the redevelopment of the pond at the cemetery, so that income we haven't yet booked. Uh, I think the order came through yesterday onto my laptop, just to complete the paperwork, so we will be doing that and that, that will be income received. In terms of cemetery maintenance, you know, one of the challenges we have around our, our assets is that possibly we're not doing enough preventative maintenance. We tend to do a lot of reactive maintenance. So we've had a rotted walkway, which we actually placed due to health and safety. And that's really, you know, that was, that was quite a significant amount of money, a couple of thousand pounds. And that's the only thing that will change that. But our level of expenditure has been relatively low, uh, uh, for maintenance for both the cemetery and the chapel. Just to come back and fight us in future years, this is obviously the worrying factor. But there's no financial risk identified from the cemetery financial report at present.
And we have had discuss, I don't know where we've got to, with the cemetery discussions from when Sue came and spoke to us.
Unfortunately, I mean, I'll be really honest, Remembrance this year has sucked the life out of any capacity to try and do cemetery stuff. Because it, it's quite simple, you know, we can, if we can agree to some things, we can actually make a little bit of money for the cemetery to pay for its own upkeep. Um, so it is possible and we can easily put that together, but until Remembrance start, I haven't even had a chance to look at it, I'll be really honest. I know what I need to do, I just pull my finger out, so.
That's why I just mentioned that as a, you know, a way for us to be making more.
Yeah, and, and, you know, honestly, in my job, I travel around cemeteries all the time. And you see some really bright schemes that have happened in what are quite old cemeteries and very similar to ours, reasonably well-kept, but like parish cemeteries. And they've set up, you know, new memorial areas which incur no groundwater issues, you know, and people love them, they go for them like mad. So some real good opportunities, but it does mean a little bit of our way, but we can come to that.
Yeah, great, thanks. Um, are there any other comments on that? Okay, thank you. Onto allotments.
Allotments, uh, allotment income is very difficult to track. Uh, we only build the allotments, uh, effectively from the eleventh of October. Um, so most of the, most of the allotment income for twenty-four, twenty-five will come in November, uh, uh, November, December, and the last little bits will come through in January. Um, we have done, at the last meeting, we indicated that we had, that we had missed the gap or the opportunity to review our allotment fees. We did a comparative analysis, not a very scientific one, but we looked at about ten or twelve different local authorities. Uh, it's very difficult to compare allotments because the lot, allotment sizes are not necessarily consistent. If you take recharged allotments, uh, here, you know, if you look at an allotment in ignorant way, I think you could land a Boeing on it. Whereas if you go to Maglan Street, you, you know, you couldn't even stop a, you know, a bicycle on it, that, that's small. And yet they have, we have standard pricing throughout, throughout all our allotments. So that's a little bit of, of, of the challenge. Um, from an expenditure perspective, we don't tend to spend very much money on allotments. It doesn't generate very much income. We, the lot, the big cost we've had this year is we had to get rid of a tree that was impacting on, on the health and safety perspective. Uh, that's cost us three thousand seven hundred, uh, and that's really the key thing. But we're fairly certain that our allotments will be, you know, will probably come into budget like we have done for the last few years.
We've got fireworks display on the market square today.
What does that mean?
It's a sound like you.
Uh, we don't, it's not, it's introduced as a topic.
Something being tracked out.
That's fireworks, unfortunately.
Yeah, it is.
But it's got nothing to do with that, I can assure you. Okay, and then the last one is just the market. I think the market is so difficult, uh, uh, at the moment. Um, today, I have to say, driving into, into Thetford, the market, I, I thought it was a Saturday. I, I, I thought I'd chosen not to come to, 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 to the office because it looked as if it was booming, but it really is a challenge. And I have to say, uh, the town team manager has done a huge amount of work. I could copy it into every single email he sends to a, to a potential market trader. I think he's done up to seventy, eighty market traders that he's approached. It's just been phenomenal. He's really tried. We have to sit, stand back and really look at what we do. We had a specialist come in from Who Goes and Advisors Markets. I haven't seen the report from that yet, but hopefully we'll be able to table that at the next meeting of this committee and start looking at some of the recommendations there, uh, going forward. But overall, our income is slightly slower, we budgeted lower income and it's still lower than, than, than we budgeted. Costs are marginal, you know, we just have a little bit of maintenance costs, which are either here and not there.
So the, you've noted the, the potential for forming a working group. Did you want to ask now if that's something?
I think, yeah, sorry, I forgot. I, I, I think if the committee is minded to form a little bit of a working group and we can get some ideas together as to do what we need to do. Because I think what is happening is we're trying to do it as an, as an add-on and, and sometimes it's a little bit of permission. So I, I have to informally ask the committee if they're willing to do that, because we, we, I, I didn't include it in the agenda. It was only with preparing the reports. But it is something that maybe the committee, we can have a look at and get together a working group and it can, you know, it's, it's just a matter of just getting some heads around the table and thinking about what we can do. Um, so if the committee is minded to that, we can. So if the committee is minded to that, we can, but I can't do it as a formal resolution, I think.
Is there interest in a working group?
I wonder if there's any scope, this is pretty difficult because of the geography essentially. I wonder if there'll be any scope to get market traders on that group.
If we could. If the working group.
The issue we have really is Simon, as the flowers comes from sort of outside King's Twin, has the scot and has the bench. Mandy comes from Norwich, Ali's local, but I don't know many where they're at frankly. Sharon comes from Norwich, or Lowstock, Norwich. They have long days, so that'd be the issue, I foresee.
Well, maybe we could do just after, with their breaking down one day or something, so. And have a structured meeting rather than just a general talk and just say, you know, half an hour, you might give me some time. They might close down a bit earlier.
That would be the only one.
Mac?
Is there any reason why I can't do sort of a teams meeting if we're going to include somebody like that who's, you know, outside of the council? Or is that something we're not too keen on, I don't know? Because it's a subcommittee, it's not necessarily, it's not this group. So I think you've got more chance than contributing if you get here in person. I was going to say, on the matter of subcommittees, I think it's a really good way of doing things because otherwise it just drifts into the next meeting. And on that note, I'd be keen to do exactly the same for the cemetery. So, you know, I'd be keen to be on a cemetery group, as told, be keen to be on a market group, you know. But you do need a couple of other people to lend a bit of a hand in there, just so we can come back to the committee with something. Otherwise, we're going to be in.
Can we call them working groups?
Working group, yeah.
Working, working response.
I'm just, I'm just getting this and that things, but. I mean, thank heaven you invented to have one on.
Yeah, it's still ongoing mate, honestly.
I don't view.
No, it, yeah, so I think it's really worth that we get involved in it. And because otherwise we might be asking the same questions at the next meeting.
So at the next meeting, are you able to take an action to see who on the committee is interested? Or who in the council, I guess it doesn't need to be on this committee?
Will it need the oversight of an officer?
Sorry?
So what I'm asking is, if we have a working group, will it need the oversight of an officer? On view? Because my concern is, I want this to be an equal amount of work for officers and councillors.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely.
And that lasts exceptionally.
Yeah, yeah, that's a working group, I think.
No, I'm just conscious of the pressures of you.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of, we're spending so much time on it.
Anyway.
At the moment, so if we can refocus and maybe understand, you know, and brainstorm a little bit wider, I think we'll start using our time more effectively.
It's a less contributory communication style.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. Okay.
Were you going to say something, Mac?
No, so if we can agree that, you know, I'm happy to be on a cemetery's one and then we can ask anybody else who'd like to be on it as well. Obviously Kerry being a cemetery's would be.
And that could be to all councils, not just this committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, fine, yeah, 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 I don't think it needs to be.
Okay.
So I'll look at the inas off for the end of December.
Yes, you can.
Great, okay, were there any other comments or questions on the financial reports?
No.
Are you happy to note the report?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to 379, the draft budget.
First of all, let me apologize to the committee for setting this up today. So I don't expect detailed engagement on the budget. I've done a kind of timetable in my own head to say that this will be distributed. We don't have information from Breckton Council on what our property indicators are. We can't work out what the overall impact will be on council tax. I've also done it in a very unbundled way. At the moment, this year, we've been trying to unbundle all the costs and get costs allocated to specific function areas. So if I take the lotness, for example, water, we should be allocating water, we should be allocating rate, we should be allocating all the costs. We just don't have the history of that at the moment. So what I've done is I've done it on the old basis so that there's a comparison. And you'll see in the schedules that I distributed today that you've got four years' history. But really it's just to consider some of the macro issues that I think we, I've been neglecting in the last few years and trying to get the budget done and which I think is very important for the committee to consider. So if I look at, if I just run through each one and then I'll stop. You know, I put out together a draft budget for the Environmental Services General, which is theoretically the old amenities committee. We don't really know what's happening with rural payments. We were advised by our agents, TWG's, to sign a new agreement because a new agreement paid a much higher compensation rate for looking after these SSI sites than the existing agreement was. But we're really uncertain as to where our income comes from and what our income will be. Typically, the RPA, the Rural Payments Authority, pays out all the money by the end of December. So we're fairly certain that we'll get, that that income will come through. But one of the things that we received yesterday is apparently we're getting some farming subsidy from the Rural Payments Authority. They didn't tell us how much, but they just told us it'd be credited to our banker cap. So whether that's part of the new agreement, I'm not too sure. I will write to the, to TWG's, our agents, and ask for some more information as to what is happening in our rural pay, what do we need to include in the budget. Donations is another key thing. This year, the Tanty manager was very successful in securing donations. So we're assuming for Anglia and Bloom next year, we will get the same level of donations, which will be about £10,000. And we've included that in the, in the, in the draft budget to that distributed today. In terms of costs, open space maintenance contracts, the floral displays, the hanging baskets contract and the cutting of the brass at the cemetery are the key, key costs. We are going out, we are engaging with potential contractors. But I have a feeling that we're going to, basically you're going to see grown men cry when myself and Nick get open those quotes because they are great pieces. And it's how we manage that. And we're going to have to think a little bit more carefully about what we do in house, as I've mentioned earlier on. What we do in house, what we outsource and make some decisions. If we want to bring stuff inside, we've got to have the equipment, which is very expensive. We've got facilities at the workshop, we've got CCTV, very modern CCTV cameras there. So that hopefully will safeguard that and reduce that risk. But it is going to be quite a significant exercise. We have to have that done by the end of December because we have to go out to tender and we have to know what we're tendering for. So there might be some more engagements that we have with the committee indirectly, formally, so that we can inform you by the end of, we meet in early January and sort of, you know, approving a formal budget. Grazing is also another issue that we have to be very conscious of. I've provided another £20,000 in the first draft budget. And that, you know, whether that's sufficient or whether that's needed at all, it's just too early to see. So some of the other matters, the maintenance of street furniture. The information we get from Breckton Council is that they're not going to maintain any of their street furniture. If it needs to be, you know, changed or fixed or replaced, the emphasis is going to be on us. I'm just looking for that in writing, but it really does concern us because there is a significant amount of street furniture that they've put on their land. The success of graziers is paramount. So whether we, at the moment, we budget £3,000 to pay for the graziers for their costs, any veterinary costs that they have, if they're dogs or to be, the effects would be. And there might be some merit in increasing that to £6,000 because we're using more than one grazer, one across Common and Fort Meadow and the castle. So that's a draft proposal in the budget. We've done a little bit in terms of maintenance of properties. Other than St Peter's, we have done a lot of investments in preventative maintenance. Again, hopefully that will start reducing in the future. Playparks, we've had a, I think we've got a dividend from the amount of money that we've actually invested in the last three financial years. So hopefully that costs, and this year, if we compare it to where we were last year, we've hardly spent any money on our playparks and that's encouraging. So hopefully we won't have to spend more money on that in terms of that line of expenditure. The two apprentices, we've talked about that, we really have to think about how we can use them and when we're going to use them. And so that's a budgeting factor. Vehicles are a significant challenge to us. We highlighted this at the last committee meeting. We have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to work out what's the best solution. I know councillor Stuart Terry gave us the name of the company to approach. All that is all in process and we'll hopefully be able to make a decision. It is on the town clerks and my performance contract to address this quite urgently, so it is receiving attention. And then some of the things that we haven't really budgeted previously, if you remember in February this year, this committee was tasked with running the council's green agenda. We haven't looked at any, you know, any initiatives that need to be included in the committee's oversight role, which we need to budget for. So that's just something to think about. So that's really, you know, I've put together a draft budget. It's not significantly different to what we had in the revised budget that we expect for this year. It's up on the original budget that we had last year because we just, you know, things like vehicle costs, et cetera, didn't kick in, but it's just a draft budget for us to use as a starting point. And like I said, it's rare and fair for me to expect committee members to comment constructively because you hardly have the information. But if anyone has any comments and you'd like more information or like to challenge some of the thinking, please do so informally because we'll all be presented back to the committee in January.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I was going to say, if we're clear on the timeline, so we've got between now, well, a little bit in advance, right before the January meeting. But we all have time to look at this, take it all in in our own time and then come back to make any comments that we want to, I need to.
I've also just commented on cemetery, the issue about having to, you know, one of the things, if I can run through those quickly as well.
Do you not do it all in one go?
Unless you want comments on the general stuff, I'm very conscious that I haven't given you very much time to.
Well, yeah, does anyone have any comments on the first report?
No, it's fine, and we have got time to look in more depth.
Just a quick one, I mean, regarding graziers, it's spending money to buy money, isn't it? And buy money cheap. And it's absolutely worth that investment. The other one that concerns me is vehicles. The model that we have now at the moment of renting is lost. And it doesn't work long term. And it's going to have to be taken in to stabilize, I think, over the long term. Is that fair?
Group fit, so all that's going into the pocket, we've got a whole lot of initiatives going. Unfortunately, there's such a shortage of vehicles, you know, suppliers, they're not hunting for the business. You know, we're actually hunting for suppliers, that's the, and it seems to have changed, you know, the last few years where there's just.
There was a big change after Covid.
There is, you know, so we have to really harass suppliers to get responses and we're quite good at doing that. Takes quite a while to get.
Two-way waiting list for a Mercedes Sprinter.
Yeah, we're not even looking at that.
We're not looking at that. And I think it's just the same for transit.
Yeah, well, that's all our, all our line of vehicles. And we've also got the, obviously we've got the government, the commercial buying organisations. So they do a lot of vehicles for ESP, public sector buying organisations. But even with that, you know, that should give us good discounts. But they're not, you know, they could sell the vehicle to a private sector business at good margin. You know, they're not going to put us higher or prioritize us.
I would suggest, by the way, that we don't want to be looking at new vehicles.
No, we could look at second hand, yeah.
I was just going to make a comment on your last comment about the green agenda. We have the biodiversity plan, we have the climate action plan and we need to look at doing a carbon footprint, which I spoke to you about. So the issue is, are we going to have time to look at these before we are?
I think it's really a matter of determining what we actually want to do. If it's in the budget, we can actually do it. So if we need to bring in a third party to do some of the research on the carbon footprint, if it's budgeted, we can do it. And that's really what I'm trying, so I don't think we have to come up with a solution. But it's what initiatives would you like us to pursue so we can put in the budget?
Okay, so but before, so the draft or the budget will be in January. So ahead of January, we need to have come up with some ballpark figures on the projects.
And initiatives, yeah.
We may go on?
In terms of the cemetery, I think we've got two problems with the cemetery. The one is that the cemetery is running out of capacity and we have not been setting aside money for a new cemetery. So that is something that we may need to flag. I think in the last few years since Covid, we, you know, and the challenges we've had with the budgeting perspective, some of this has fallen off the radar. So as a committee, I think we may need to look at that and say, well, what are we actually going to do? And I think it's the comments about generating additional income from cemetery rather than just the traditional forms. Some of the things that memorial, trees, the memorials, that we really have to pursue. So I think the suggestion of getting a working group together would actually help because otherwise, you know, quite embarrassed to say, we was talking about that in January, February of this year. We're now in November and there's been no progress whatsoever. The other thing that we're trying to do, and I mentioned this in the financial report, is that we have to come up with preventative maintenance programmes for all our assets. You know, in this building, we're still suffering major consequences. If you look at all the corners, you'll just see there's water coming in, there's water ingress. And it's because the gutters haven't been properly maintained and the boxes. So we really are trying to put more emphasis on that. If we can get that budgeted and done, then we save money in the longer term. So that's the other thing that's happening there. I don't know if you want to stop.
On the cemetery, any comments on the cemeteries? I think we've already said what we want to say on that.
On allotments. One of the challenges we have is we just got to keep our income plans going. And we've got the same challenge with cemeteries. If you remember, this year we approved cemetery fees that were last reviewed in 2019, 2020. So what we're asking and what we're going to put into the budget, and I'd like the committee to think about this, is that we put in a standard annual increase rate so that officers are aware of that. Because if we keep waiting, coming to the committee and saying, from a budget perspective, can we increase allotments by 5% or 10%, depending on where inflation is? It kind of sows down the process. What we're looking for is a mandate to say, you know, going forward, offices, you can bank on a 5% increase, an annual increase, so that when we do have these increases, they come in, they drift ahead rather than what we have at the moment, where we have no increases for a few years and that we have substantial increases. And I think that gives, you know, puts a little bit more pressure on the councillors because people will remember the 20% increase, they won't necessarily remember the 5% increase. So we also like to change that from a budgeting perspective and get those both in so that the increases happen and they're budgeted going forward.
I was just going to say that I think this should be normal practice. You know, if we don't have a, in line with inflation or whatever other metric we want to use, if we don't have an annual increase, it comes as a massive surprise, as you've said, and then we just look bad. And what happens as councillors is we all resist and don't want to make the big change because it's going to look bad on us. But we've got to do that for keeping the council alive, and I shouldn't be saying it in cemetery context. But if you see what I mean, it should be normal and it shouldn't be a surprise. And it should be such part of normal business. It's not something that we're doing extremists every few years. So, yes.
Yeah, no, I would say similarly. The only thing I would add is, given the current costs of cleaning up, which are huge, I think instead of a inflation figure every year, it's inflation plus one until such times we've got that. How's that sound?
Yeah, I can't disagree.
We need to increase our revenue to get them back into use, don't we?
So we'll put that as a budget principle and table the budget in January, that that was.
So inflation plus one percent.
Inflation plus one, brilliant.
We had, we had talks about putting off low income allotment in August, I think it was, about putting off low income families who want to access allotments and whether we can apply discounts or offer payment plans. Maybe something to look at.
What we were doing, so what we were doing is we were just saying, well, where are we in terms of allotment fees generally? And we're actually not on sync either. There's some that are cheaper than us, but there's some that are far more expensive than us. So we're all kind of middle, but the question. But the question then becomes, the other thing that we talked about was deposits. Because if we have to clear some of those allotments, wow, you know, we were talking about waste, waste costs. A skip can cost four hundred, five hundred pounds to empty. And if we can fill up a skip with one abandoned allotted lot, we're in deep pockets. They pay fifty pounds, which they're quite happy to walk away from. So those are some of the things that we have to do. But I saw that as a slightly longer term project than an immediate budgeting project.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a lovely idea, but we are where we are. We have this excess cost. Let's rid ourselves of that first, then start thinking about low income. Allotments are not dear, pound away. Not dear. If people want to use them, then I think most people could and should use them. But our priority must be clearing those allotments. And who knows, when we get those twenty five allotments cleared, then there are more allotments for people who are low incomes, et cetera. But we've got, that's the first priority, I think.
I think it was actually, you've rung the bell in my head. It was talking about increasing the deposit, we were talking about that in relation to rather than allotment. So, not right. Thank you.
Right. Just one last thing, which I think we've really excelled at, is our level of inspection. And the thorough inspections of the allotment sites have improved hugely. And this is why the waiting list has come down. If you think two years ago, we had sixty to seventy people on our waiting list, it's now down to the twenties. We have churned a lot of allotment holders who just were sitting there and using their allotment as a dumping site to be able to, to be honest, not to actually use it.
Yeah, that's key.
Yeah.
And it's obvious in numbers.
The last one is just the markets. And again, the markets are just so difficult to budget. If you have, there is a schedule that I put here, so that's the allotments, the markets. You know, we, our revised budget at the moment is we're gonna receive twelve thousand five hundred and eighty five pounds in income. We've budgeted for twenty five, twenty six, fourteen thousand five hundred. The maintenance, we don't expect very much maintenance costs. So really just a matter of how, you know, if you get the working group and work a little bit smarter to try to, to look at our market, hopefully we'll be able to achieve that budget. But I'm not too sure that it has, because of the nature of our market operations, it's not going to make or break our pre-step, you know, it is meant to be small enough.
Yeah, I think, I think it's interesting that we've got a real bounce when we drop the fees. That has more or less been sustained. But I think it's, I don't think there's any scope, certainly no scope for dropping them again. There might be some stuff we can do with incentives to get people in, sort of golden handcuffs type thing. But putting costs up at the moment would be disastrous. Yeah, really good. So, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so we're to note and discuss as we have and identify matters for inclusion when the budget is further revised, which we will.
We can do before the next meeting.
Get in touch with Alan. Right, ready to move on then? Okay, so we have the small grant, three eighty small grants. There is one small grant application from Thetford Voices. And did we want to run through it quickly or is everyone ready?
From a compliance perspective, they have complied with the conditions of the grant. They are, they do regularly apply, so they're not, it's once a year, so they have applied. It's indeed, they've submitted all the information. And it's really just a matter of whether the committees happy to support the purpose of the grant, which is really around the youth, you know, building confidence, helping youths have an outfit for during the summer and one day Christmas workshop.
I might be being a little thick here. I didn't quite understand the difference between Thetford Singers and Thetford Voices. Which is it?
I keep using, I have embarrassed myself quite often, Thetford Voices is different to Thetford Singers.
So the reason.
Same thing. It's mixed all the way through.
Yeah.
I thought they were the one in the same thing, but maybe not.
Sorry, I keep using it and I've embarrassed myself because I've sent letters to the wrong organisation. The last sentence in the thing that says Thetford Singers is actually Thetford Voices that applied for a five hundred pound grant.
So we've got that at the beginning, Thetford Voices has a clear mission. The checklist is for the Thetford Singers. And it says Thetford Singers have applied for a five hundred pound grant. So I just think that.
It's Thetford Voices.
Brilliant thing, but whichever one it is, can we have the same name all the way through?
Yes, my apologies, that's, that's me.
So it's definitely Thetford Voices.
Thetford Voices, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
There's only one mention of Thetford Voices, lots of mentions of Thetford Singers.
It's because the part that comes from them is the, is this part, the rest of it comes from us. So I've confused it.
So where Alan's written it, it's incorrect.
Yeah, so the conclusion is the Thetford Voices have complied.
So you sound like I got it right.
Right.
No, you didn't.
It didn't.
There's something on mention of Thetford Voices.
So that's where they wrote it. So I think the Thetford Voices are the group that support children and confidence in singing and music. Thetford Singers are an adult choir.
Yeah. I'm very happy for that.
Yeah, it's a really good proposal for a grant. Any comments?
No.
Proposer? I think Stuart was first, but second, sorry, sorry, it's a race.
Slap to the arm.
Okay, great. Is that everything we need for that?
Thank you.
Excellent. So update on potential funding bids on number three eight one, update on potential funding bids.
This is what we wanted to do, is just let the committee be aware that there's a whole lot of things that we are actually doing as officers. And we just wanted to update the committee. We've put together a schedule which we included in the, in the pack. We're not asking for, 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 you know, the committee to condone this. We have to go through the formal processes. But it's just so that the committee is aware that there's a whole lot of programmes happening. And because we are so innovative from a senior staff perspective, these are the areas that we're focusing on. So that, you know, again, as if we make some progress on these issues, we have to go back through the, through the paperwork, so our action processes. We are speaking, we've got one, a donor for three of the projects. But we just, we're shocked when we've actually got it rather than the hope that we'll get it.
Yeah, that's really, really useful to see. Any comments or questions on any of those?
Yeah, so the, the front displays, have we taken them out into the estates?
We are, we are doing that. So there's two aspects to go. We've approached Breton Council for permission. And they are slowly giving us licences. So in Graham's county report, we've got licences for three areas. We've been told that there's something we have to do to get the licence on Kinsbalt, or we are applying for the licence at Kinsbalt. So we can continue the planting there. These are just, if, if, there's some other spaces that are owned by councillors other than Thetford. And we are looking to improve those and we're looking for funding to do that. So that's what that funding is.
I'm very keen that we move the great progress we've done in the town centre out across the entire town. People are asking for it. We should give it to them, at least in the first instance.
And I think, I think the focus of the last litter picks was the example of that. Where we didn't focus in the town centre, we actually, we moved out. So that's really much noted.
I'd also just quickly, very quickly say that the rainwater harvest is a brilliant idea and that pushes towards golden and angry blue. Hello, I'm not showing up now, I apologize for the cemetery's run.
Yeah, it's all good stuff.
So with these applications, these are kind of a list of projects. And if one bit of funding isn't got, then it's, there's another bit that's looked for and.
I think it's just a matter of, this is where we're focusing on. You know, at some stage, we have to formally approve, get approval. We can't sign a grant agreement as officers, we don't have a dedicated authority. This is really, these are the items that we put in the file. And we just, you know, there's some additional items that we'd like. But if someone comes and asks us to do another grant, you know, like, it's quite difficult for us to sometimes accommodate that. And this is also part of that purpose. It's just to say, we don't say no for the sake of saying no. We're trying to just say these are the areas that we've, that we're not yet.
Yeah, that's really, it's really good to know. Excellent. Right, on to three eight two, progress on actions from previous meetings. So we have a brand new.
We have a.
Style of list.
I think there's, there are some standings, that there are some competents. This list is still evolving. When we had our pre-agenda meeting, I promised the chair that the archive one would be very, very, very long because we had done lots, but it's actually not, so I just have to investigate that. So there's two pages. The first page is the current actions that still have to be done or were completed since the last meeting. And the second chart is actually previously completed, the previous committee meetings. These are where we've actually reported them as being completed in this may or year and that they, that they then stayed there until the end of the year, which we start again. So there's, it's hopefully a bit more accountability. None of this last agenda meeting, but the previous one, the chair asked me, what happened to all these actions? And I had to cross my fingers and hope I wouldn't be struck down with lightning that we had competed them all and this is a test to actually prove that.
I might have a couple of missing, but I'll speak to you after.
This is fantastic.
Seven three five twenty three, the implementation of the. The proposals are happy to lay a presentation, but not whilst the town council meeting has been disrupted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it says here a committee meeting, so that would be one of these meetings rather than full council.
Right, so they can do one in front of us.
I think that would be more appropriate, given the situation.
It's a committee meeting, so it's a bit long to ask.
So were they not coming back? Do you know if they were?
Well, I think there was the impression that it was a town council meeting and there was no way there was going to take, while the meeting's being disrupted.
Okay, so to take that forward, are you able to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Send it in, that's my wife, who's become a set team, I guess.
Any other comments on that? I think just let Alan know if anything's missing. There must be more completed.
There are more completed.
We haven't only done four. Okay. Great, so the final thing, three eight three, committee officers' update.
There's one that's not necessarily for this committee, but there is, if I've still been asked to remind councillors that there's a Zoom meeting tomorrow night for the potential of the next, for next stall. So just to remind councillors to attend. And just to say that our website went live today. It's still, it's not perfect. We had said it a little further on. But it is a huge improvement as to what it was. The agendas and the minutes will be corrected tomorrow. But the team, our suppliers will be working, they were working at eleven o'clock last night to get going. And I think it's going to make a significant difference. But if you have any constructive comments from this committee's perspective, please, please do it, Lesner.
I've already made some comments.
You have?
It's a magnificent study of golden blues, I love that. It's a vast improvement on the previous one in terms of navigability, in terms of look and in terms of scope. So I'm incredibly pleased. Can I just bring something else? I don't know where it sits. I don't know if it sits on this committee or the other committee. A number of years back, I badgered the Breton council officer regarding flight posts in Thetford. And in the end, I was so fed up with him, he was saying it's hard to monitor at times of this. I walked down into the A eleven with some white cars and cleared the whole from sanctuary to chase to that hundred instance flight post and took them back to all the, their business now. It's been pretty clear since then. However, when there's an event on in the town, that these people come along and they just slap their flypost around without even asking, you know, the decency to ask permission. And yeah, we're gonna say yes anyway. But it would be nice to sort of, them to come and say, the circus is gonna be in town, can we do this? And they're like, yeah, providing, a week later, they're all gone. I think there's four or five, there's sort of four or five events in town that they do just go ahead and do it. But it would be nice to be asked.
They don't have to ask us, they actually get permission from Breton. The last lots that I think I know you're referring to, we as officers worked with Breton council and a number of the organisations have been approached. They did scale down, they're all guard the last time I checked. And Breton are very much aware of it. And some of the more permanent ones that were on London Road, for example, they've also been approached that they will, and they will.
I think it was more so, in fact, I think the circus just went to town. Just really huge.
And that's what caused it. So we did have, we actually had some conversation.
There's quite a few in town actually at the moment. You know, if, once you start looking, you see some of our street lights, they're like tone poles. They've got so many things up and, you know, it's.
And that can't, you know, that must move on to like the flower that angry and blue. Because the first thing people see is all this flyposty and that must go against town as well. I don't know if it does, it might do, it does look special.
Well, if I can comment, what we've done is we've got the right people at Breton. So if you do have an issue, we're quite happy to send you those details and then you can approach them again. And that's really what I'll, a way of doing it. Because we can't, otherwise we just postbox.
No, I'll be happy to do that.
I don't have it, I'll have it in my emails, I can get it forwarded to you.
All right, we'll sort that out later. Terry?
I'd be very wary of getting involved in that sort of stuff. Breton don't need an invitation to dump expenses and stuff on us. So if we get involved, they're gonna dump it on us and I don't want it. I wanted to stay with Breton.
I think as Breton councillors.
We, yeah, we've got that communication, let's leave that there. We take that on, we become responsible for it, it's more money we spend and more money we save for Breton. So I'll keep that in mind.
What I would say is, if there is a point of contact, I'd be quite happy to, as a resident of the town, to hand that out to everybody and say, give us a chance to ring if you don't like it.
Best of luck.
Yeah, because what I'm very aware of is if this council complains, it's one voice.
Yeah.
You know, and there's more than that who complain about these.
Yeah.
So if we could share that, that would be cool.
Give me an email, I'll respond to it.
I say this to residents in all areas, that, because I say, well, yous complain. My, my voices, it's still only one voice. If lots of yous complain.
Yeah.
Better job.
Okay, was there anything else?
No, that's it.
Any other comments?
Good start.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
It's in the recording. It's in the recording.
So you're on Zoom tomorrow?
Recording?
Hi, cheers Gordon. Yes, we'll do.